Recording in progress.
Doesn't look like it.
Hmm. I think it is just, I'm the bad luck, I think. I was gone, everything was working fine. I come back, we have problems again. Hope I see a thumbs up. Working now. Wonderful.
I can hear you.
Perfect. All right. Well, let's go to introductions for those who are online.
Jeff Van Arsdale, Benton County Sheriff.
Inga Williams, Planner.
Sean Scorbo, Board of Commissioners. Or. Planning Commission, sorry.
Johann Eckley, Diversity and Inclusion Coordinator. He they pronounced.
Suzanne Hoffman, Health Department Director.
Julie Arena, Hope Coordinator.
James Rodell, President of Corvallis since 2006.
April Holland, Public Health Administrator. She her?
Shannon Bush, Community Development Program Coordinator.
All right. And I saw Sean Edmonds say something, but he was muted, but he is here. Is there anybody else? All right. Welcome, everyone. Thank you so much for coming. We are going to start with an announcement and Commissioner Ojero has an announcement.
Thank you, Chair Wise. I'm going to read a brief statement about Supreme Court decisions recently. On Friday, June 24th, 2022, Americans lost a piece of their freedom. Supreme Court of the United States issued a ruling that overturned Roe v. Wade, returning the regulation of abortion to the states and territories. For 50 years, women have had the right to choose to end a pregnancy. The loss of bodily autonomy creates health equity issues for people across the country, especially for people of color, low-income people, disabled people in youth. The loss of the right to abortion affects trans and non-binary people as well. Choosing to get an abortion is a deeply personal decision. Some people get an abortion as a result of a miscarriage, a life-threatening autopsy, pregnancy, other health conditions, or rape. Others choose an abortion because they don't have the financial capacity or bandwidth to carry a pregnancy or to add another child to their family. Others have deep personal convictions against abortions and have the right to choose not to have one. As a county commissioner, I am also a member of the County Board of Health. I believe that abortion is health care, whether chosen to protect maternal physical health and mental health, or the long-term health and well-being of their family. Access to health care was already heavily dependent on the state you live in. And the Dobbs decision increases that disparity, especially for those who can bear children. I believe in a guaranteed right for all U.S. citizens to the liberty and freedom to choose when, where, and with whom to have children. The Oregon Reproductive Health Equity Act of 2017, House Bill 3391, expanded access to abortion services for Oregonians by requiring abortion services to be covered by health insurance. Abortion access remains legal and safe in Benton County and across Oregon, but ease of access and travel distances vary greatly even within our state. Even though unrestricted abortion access is currently guaranteed in Oregon law, its future depends on all of us and our future votes in state and federal elections. A Pennsylvania Republican has already introduced a bill in Congress, H.R. 705, that would make abortion illegal everywhere in the United States. The loss of individual bodily autonomy is a serious breach of our civil rights. It may be easy for some people to say that it will just be an inconvenience, requiring more vigilant use of birth control or abstinence. But the originalist or textualist philosophy argued by the Supreme Court majority with respect to the 14th Amendment to the Constitution also undermines our full suite of civil rights, including marriage rights and the right to use contraception. This is a very slippery slope. And if we, the people, do not act to protect our democracy and its promise of an evermore perfect union, we risk waking up one day in an authoritarian state. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ojero. And with that, we will move on to some recognition. We have Fleet Services recognition as the ninth best public fleet in America. And we have with us Gary Stockoff and Keith Nicholson. And then a slew of Fleet Services employees. So who would like to come up to the dais and talk?
Thank you, Commissioner, for the recognition for us. It's been a long road for the Fleet Department as we've grown and transitioned over the last several years. And we've strove it over the last years to really improve the program and raise the bar for the the ability that we put out for our technicians to maintain the vehicles for our clientele, whether it be county vehicles or other neighboring jurisdictions. And I'm pleased to say the team we've got here now, we introduced ourselves earlier, has been the best team I think we've had in many years for the county. And we've gradually increased over the years. I think the first time we got on the list, we were in the high 90s. And this year, to be recognized in the top 10 is a testament to the work that they do every day to make sure all the vehicles are roadworthy and safe. So congratulations to the team.
And I think we maybe want to follow up with that plaque, yes.
That's a pretty small plaque. Couldn't you guys give a ride? Like a check?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, I wanted to say that, and Keith, I'm glad you mentioned the progress because that was my impression is this wasn't a continuing recognition. This is a significant increase in our standing in our operations. So you're all to be congratulated. Really appreciate the hard effort that it takes to do what you do.
Recognized across the country. Professionals throughout the country are involved in the grading and it's a pretty rigorous process to go through to be recognized. So they've done a good job.
Any other comments?
I just would like to say that I'm in my sixth year as a commissioner and I've watched Fleet Services really struggle over the years. And so it's fantastic to see this recognition from your peers and made this happen.
Yes, and I just want to add my thanks as well. As a commissioner, you know, I think my vision for Benton County can kind of be boiled down to one word, which is excellence. I would love for us to all be excellent. And this is an example of excellence. Thank you. All right. So now we will move on to comments from the public. Oh, thank you.
No, you're right. Sorry.
That's okay. All right. Comments from the public. And we will start with testimony that is in the room first. And then if you are online and would like to testify or provide your comments, please put your name in the chat if you are able. And we will limit comments to three minutes per person. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment in the room? Seeing none? All right, we will move on to public comment online. And first up, I see Sean Edmonds. Sean, please go ahead and mute and you will have three minutes.
Morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, yes, again, good morning, Board of Commissioners and staff. As you know, my name is Sean Edmonds and I'm the general manager here at Republic Services in Corvallis, as well as proud to live in Benton County as well. And I just really appreciate the opportunity to talk with you this morning regarding the agenda being presented later this morning by Mr. Sam Imparati and ICM Resolutions, AKA Oregon Consensus. So please allow me this opportunity to express Republic's sincere interest and willingness to participate in this process. You know, we fully understand the value and importance of this community dialogue and we look forward to the opportunity to bring information to deliberate as we all try to make Benton County a better community. As this process is discussed today, I would ask that the commissioners be mindful of two significant different subjects that appear, at least from our perspective, to be getting mixed up a little bit. Number one, the merits of the process of the expansion of Coffin Butte landfill. And number two, the collection services that are currently being provided throughout the county. Although these issues appear to be related, they are significantly more complex than they appear. That is why counties and cities typically go through an entirely different planning process for these services and why the subjects are rarely dealt with in the same contract. Mr. Imparati's recommendation makes a very clear distinction of these two subjects when he highlights the role that should be played by Republic Services. Regarding the expansion of Coffin Butte landfill, Republic Services is the owner and operator and we play a critical role in the conversations and we want to be, again, a good community partner. I must assume that is why Mr. Imparati suggests that Republic has an active voting member role. In contrast, as it relates to the long-term solid waste plan, it makes sense that Republic would take on a role of what we hope would be viewed as a trusted advisor. These two roles are briefly discussed in Mr. Imparati's recommendation. I would like to take the opportunity to highlight these two incongruent roles and ask that the commissioners, please, view these issues separately. Mr. Imparati's first charge is consistent with what has been discussed and as noted by his recommendation, whereas the second charge includes topics beyond the landfill. Finally, on behalf of Republic Services, we requested the current scope of the work group be limited to the issue, which is the landfill expansion. And I want to thank you again for this opportunity to share our thoughts as we have done during the interview process. Thank you.
Next up, I have James Rodell. James, go ahead. You can unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Wise. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Yeah, I've referring to Mr. Edmund's piece in the GT recently and other times I've heard that there are discrepancies in the contract with Republic Services in terms of performance, such as the leachates not being treated on site, et cetera. I don't need to go through the whole rigmarole of all of the different comments that have been made about what appears to be a disconnect between Republic's performance and the contract stipulations. If that's the case, I don't know, but I trust people such as Mr. Guy or Mr. Eklund, who are, I guess, volunteer board members of oversight or assisting some sort of boards that are assisting the process to get resolved. I kind of feel in a way that Benton County is being used as a patsy by other counties and perhaps even by Republic. If, if, if these folks can't, if the folks in other counties can't take care of their own garbage, why do we have to take it? And did we ever accept having only 6% of the garbage going into the landfill from Benton County? Something about that just feels real wrong to me. And I'd like to see you commissioners and working with people like Mr. Guyer and Mr. Eklund and others really get down to brass tacks and not be played for patsies. I think I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Is there anyone else online who would like to testify? If so, please unmute yourself. I see Nancy Whitcomb would like to speak. Nancy, go ahead and unmute yourself and you will have three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I had requested that Sam Imparati get in touch with representatives from corporate, from Republic Services and request that they commit to not submit a new CUP until after the process that he outlines is completed, which I believe is going to be in December of 2022. He did not respond to that. I would just ask the commissioners to ask him to respond to that request. I think if volunteers are going to put in a lot of work on tuning the CUP process, that we have to make sure that that process is not short-circuited before the volunteers are done with their work. Thank you very much. Goodbye.
Thank you, Nancy. Is there anyone else who would like to provide comment online? Anyone else who would like to provide comment? Please unmute yourself. All right, seeing none. I think we can move on to.
I'd like to. I'd like to make.
Sure. Please go ahead. Kevin Kanaga.
Yes, my name is Kevin Kanaga and I live in Benton County. Commissioners, I'd like to remind you that earlier this year, I contacted each of you individually and we met with each of the commissioners individually. When I say we, it's a small group of individuals that are concerned about Republic Services following the conditional use permit that they presently have and also any expansion of the landfill. At that meeting, we shared several issues where Republic blatantly disregards their conditional use permit. Let's just take hours of operation. It's to be eight to five. Would be easy for any of you to go by the landfill from five in the morning until seven at night and see that they have decided that they have a right to work beyond those hours. So here they are, here's a corporation doesn't abide by their conditional use permit, yet nothing is done. I contacted you and asked for community engagement. I thought that was the best approach to be taken at the time. At this point, I'm I'm about to give up. At a very recent meeting, the Board of Commissioners decided to approve a hauling service with Republic Services, which, you know, under a corporation, it's really one in the same. Sure, there should be separate contracts for both. But when you're in a position where in good governance, you have a leverage to get corporations to do what they had agreed to do, it wouldn't seem wise to go ahead and approve a 10-year contract for a hauling service. Especially when it had been pointed out to all of you by a member of the public, something that our county council had tried to do for decades. It was in his own, something he probably wrote county code.
Kevin, I need to ask you to wrap up, please. You've had three minutes. Go ahead and wrap up.
Okay, so I can't understand how you could go ahead and approve the services haul agreement with all of this. So I'm wondering if you as a commissioners would recommend that we just start filing legal lawsuits? Is that what we're supposed to do? We've attempted engagement.
Thank you. I'm sorry to cut you off, Kevin, but that has been more than three minutes. We do appreciate you coming today and we appreciate your comments. Thank you. Is there anyone else online who would like to provide public comment? Last call for public comment online. Please unmute. We do have someone in the boardroom. Please come up to the microphone. And please state your name.
Hi, thank you for hearing me. I just want to follow up with the last comment made here. And I think he asked a valid question. We, members of the community have continually asked questions in all formats that they feel are available to them and gotten very little or no response. What do we do? And how do we address you so that you answer that question for us? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, last call for public comments. Hearing none, we will move on. Next up on the agenda is to review and approve the agenda. I do have one addition, which is to add item 4.2 under the work session, which will be a hope update. Do we have any other requests for changes on the agenda? Seeing none, I will consider that approved and we will move into the work session. First up, we have the COVID update from our Department Operations Center with Suzanne Hoffman and April Holland. Welcome.
4.2 on the work session or we want to add that in the business?
Works 4.2 in the work session.
Okay, just want to mention.
Thank you for the clarification.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm going to turn it over to April for your COVID-19 update for this week.
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, all. Hey, before I jump into the COVID-19 update, you know, as the public health administrator here, I want to thank Commissioner Ojero for sharing her important message on the Supreme Court ruling access to reproductive services, including abortion, is foundational health care. So I really appreciate hearing that. For COVID-19, you know, the virus continues to compete with our demands and disrupt other areas of our public health work and other work. We continue to see frequent change in the pandemic with Omicron subvariant BA5 providing more evasive to existing immunity and more transmissible than anything we've seen with Omicron previously. Thus, we're seeing a new surge, or perhaps it's better to say a wave within a wave of cases and increased hospitalizations as a result. You all may know that last Thursday, Benton County, along with 20 additional counties in Oregon, was categorized at the high CDC community level. That's the highest of three levels. As CDC for Benton County lists the following metrics. They incorporate the case rate, which for Benton County is listed currently on their, on CDC website, is over 300 per 100,000. A county must have a case rate of over 200 per 100,000 to go into the medium or high categories. The other two are related to hospitalization for COVID. And in Benton County, our new COVID-19 admissions per 100,000 population tipped over the 10 per 100,000, which is that threshold, to 10.8 hospitalizations per 100,000. So that's what moved us into the red. The third criteria is the percentage of staff beds that are in use for, by patients with COVID-19. And that figure is at 8.7%. So either the new COVID-19 admissions or the percentage of staff inpatient beds for folks with COVID-19, either of those being 10 or higher would put us into that high category as long as we have 200 cases or more per 100,000 population. So in the past week, state hospitalizations have risen about 8% from 423 to 458. This is somewhat of a modest rise, but a rise nonetheless, and really all it took for us to move into having more than 10 new admissions per 100,000. In our region, our hospitalizations ranged from 67 to 80. And locally, our hospitalizations, I was able to connect with our infectious disease doc contact at Good Samaritan Regional Medical Center. And they stated that they're faring okay with the increases in hospitalizations. It's more an issue of staffing, as we're seeing, you know, not only locally and not only in healthcare, but across the state, staff illnesses with COVID-19 are the primary challenge at this time. But they're doing all right. And our public health recommendations have been reiterated in communications to community members and our website and social media. Ultimately, we should remember that transmission is largely and collectively in our power. The more we avoid infections individually, the more we reduce the burden in our communities. So we ask our community members to be up to date on vaccines, to seek out activities and locations with good ventilation, look for airflow, to stay home when sick, and to consider the use of rapid tests before gatherings, for meetings, when traveling, or when feeling unwell. And we recommend masking in indoor public spaces at this time as well as the CDC recommends that to reduce your risk further and to reduce risk to your community. So the figures that I shared with you in terms of cases on the CDC site, we have some more recent data for the last about week or so. Cases, reported cases did drop somewhat last week, but they're still quite high. We're in this high plateau and we're seeing a good deal of variation week to week. Reported cases provide a sense of where our communities are in terms of transmission, but they really can't be considered precise measurements at this time due to just the overwhelming use of rapid antigen tests. Measuring concentration of SARS-CoV-2 virus in wastewater has been occurring locally for quite some time now, and it adds to the information that reported cases provides. And after weeks of high viral concentration signals in the Corvallis wastewater, the past few readings have been lower. I feel encouraged that the wastewater signals and the reported cases are heading in the right direction. However, we'll continue to monitor the data as well as to look further afield to new developments as they arise. And I have a feeling that they will. In terms of outbreaks, you know, our communicable disease team has been very busy. We're a smaller team, but they're very busy working on several complex outbreaks in residential treatment facilities, long-term care, and among other vulnerable community members. As our response has shifted away from individual quarantine and individual case investigation, I want this body and everyone to know that there is a lot of support and guidance being given to assist our very vulnerable people in residential settings. Also, I want to note that in hospitals, we'll remember during the Delta wave and in Omicron that discharge delays from hospitals into long-term care or skilled nursing facilities were a challenge. And, you know, they got better and the delays were shorter for a while, but they do remain a challenge. In our region, just yesterday, there were more than 100 discharge delays to long-term care facilities or skilled nursing facilities, and this all plays into, you know, how our healthcare system is coping with the increased cases right now. So hospitals are working and the state is working with long-term care and skilled nursing facilities to reduce those delays and to get hospital beds open for those who need them and the adequate care for those who are ready for a step-down unit. And then in terms of COVID testing, our PCR testing has been decreasing with a really marked decrease of when K through 12 school ended for the summer. There were just a lot of PCR testing happening with the weekly programs that schools participated in. We currently have a good supply of home antigen tests and have free tests available in Benton County offices, including at our Health Services Building, available at library locations at OSU and elsewhere. And we just learned that the iHealth home antigen tests have an extended shelf life. So if you have some of those at home, they can now be used six months from the date of expiration listed on the box. In terms of COVID-19 vaccination, as you know, COVID-19 vaccines were recently authorized for kids as young as six months old. Across Oregon, a little more than 5% of those kiddos age six months to four years have received their first dose of COVID vaccine. And in Benton County, we're about double that. At least 10% have come through at this point, and it's still pretty early days. Huge thanks to local pediatricians, Lincoln Health Center, pharmacies, and many others who have made this happen. We have several vaccination opportunities listed on the Benton County website right now for a variety of age groups. These include upcoming opportunities at schools, at community centers, at Oregon State University, and even at the county fair. I'm sure there's much more I could talk about, but I'll leave it there and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have for me today. Thanks.
Thank you, April. Comments or questions for April? Commissioner Malone?
Yeah, a couple. April, you mentioned testing kits that are currently available. Is there a good supply in the pipeline? Or are we distributing what we have and may run out at some point in the future?
Thanks, Commissioner. That's a great question. We are distributing what we have. We still have quite a supply and we know it's not a it's not a unlimited supply. We've heard from OHA that we're able to order more tests. And we do have access to some COVID-19 funding that if needed, we may be able to buy additional rapid antigen tests. So for the short to medium term, we are okay with the testing situation.
Okay, thank you. My other question, I haven't heard much about OSU and what they're up to. And yes, we're in summer, finally got here, but fall isn't too far away and wondering what they're up to.
Thanks, Commissioner. I'm in contact with OSU Student Health Services every other week, and we've kept that going through the summer. They are working on developing their fall guidelines. We're having discussions about vaccination requirements, about back-to-school vaccination opportunities for people to get their boosters, as well as their plans for isolation for students who develop COVID-19. And, you know, I'd be happy, once those plans are set, to either bring those back to you, or perhaps we can have OSU come and present those. But the work is ongoing and in development.
I appreciate that information. They've been a good partner in this effort throughout, and I was pretty sure they were continuing, but it's nice to hear some specifics. So thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? I see Sheriff Van Arsdale. Go ahead, Sheriff.
I just wanted to thank April for these briefings. They're incredibly meaningful for me. I wanted to let the BOC know that Friday, based on the information provided by April and the CDC, I've implemented a mandatory mask mandate again in my facility at the jail for anybody that's in the facility, coming, new, current employees, anybody that comes in has to be masked up. And we've never stopped testing, so we still continually test anybody that comes in the facility as well. So thank you for these reports, April. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Sheriff. We appreciate your diligence and your good work there. Great. Any other questions or comments for April before we move on to the next agenda topic? All right. Thank you so much, April. We really appreciate it. And with that, we will move on to 4.2, a hope update, and we have Suzanne Hoffman, Julie Arena, and Rebecca Taylor with us. Welcome.
Thank you for having us. I am going to attempt to screen share so that you can see an overview of the topics we are going to talk about today, and I would appreciate your feedback if you are able to see it or not. So give me just one second. All right. No, this is not working for me. So I'm gonna go ahead and just tell you our agenda for today. We have eight mini updates, given the time that we have, and it'll go between myself and Suzanne Hoffman and Rebecca Taylor. So Suzanne will start out by introducing some new staff and their roles. She will also touch upon emergency warming and cooling and smoke sheltering. Then I will provide an update about Project Turnkey 2.0. And we'll also give an update about the HB4123 pilot for coordinated homeless response, and I'll introduce that and then pass it over to Rebecca as the project manager. And then we will do a brief update on Behavioral Health Services, and that'll be Suzanne. And then I will give an update about homelessness and services system improvement, which is really ongoing implementation of the HOPE recommendations. I'll also touch upon topics that are coming up at upcoming HOPE meetings because they are very interesting and will provide some education for anybody in the community who's interested, including our commissioners. And then we will end with an update about the upcoming Joint Electeds Meeting happening in September. So I'll go ahead and pass it to you, Suzanne.
Great. Thank you, Julie. So as you know, we have some new staff for HOPE implementation. I'll introduce her, but I suspect you already know Rebecca Taylor, who recently joined us as our project manager for HOPE implementation. As you know, she was with the county previously in our Community Development Department and has been engaged with this work, both in that prior role and is now come back to us. We're so fortunate to have her to help create some really important structure to help us capture, document, and plan ahead for the many activities that we are engaged in. We also have on contract and with us today Libby Lasecki-Winter, and you'll see her cameras on. Libby has, as our grant writer and researcher, has done this kind of work in various areas and here locally as well. So is very familiar with the type of work that we're doing, the type of financial opportunities that are either available or may come our way, and is actually fully engaged in the Project Turnkey 2.0 effort, as I think the first really big piece of work that's come her way since she started with us, and we'll be talking more about that later. And then, of course, communications is the other critical staffing recommendation that came out of the HOPE Advisory Board. And I have authorized our Health Department Communications Coordinator, Kaylee Olson, who is on vacation this week, otherwise she'd be with us, to spend at least 50% of her time dedicated to the communications work for the HOPE Advisory Board and HOPE Implementation work. And Julie will, and the team will be referencing this along the way, but our first big piece of formal communication was released on last Friday afternoon. And that work is guided not only by Kaylee's communication skills and background, but also by a subcommittee of the HOPE Advisory Board who research and give feedback on best practices for communicating this work. And as you know, lots of folks, both in the city, county, and among our community partners, do great work on a daily basis. But if we aren't talking about it and we aren't communicating about it, how does anybody know? So finally getting some of those key pieces of communication, some of which will be regular periodic communications launched, which was a big milestone for us recently. So the team is of dedicated staff that you all authorized is absolutely critical to moving this work forward, and we're starting to feel the progress that's moving at this point based on that dedicated staff. So thank you. And then additionally, as we have our city, county, and city-county provider meetings, we have other folks from the county that join us as a regular part of that of that team, and that's Sarah Hartstein, Healthy Communities Division Leader, Darren Nichols with Community Development, and Ashley Telemontes and Ricky Garcia as the co-interim behavioral health directors at this time. So and others are available to pull in as needed, but those are our key team support folks. Moving on to the update on emergency warming, cooling, and smoke sheltering. As you know, some, these are issues that affect our entire community. And in particular, our focus has been on, for HOPE implementation, has been on our homeless or unsheltered community members. And I think I might have mentioned in a previous update that City Emergency Management and County Emergency Management, led, of course, by Brian Lee, and then Public Health Emergency Preparedness are working together to develop plans for cooling centers, wildfire smoke shelter plans, and warming centers in winter. We were really, I was hoping to have warming centers in winter be the first area of focus, largely because we would like to have something solid in place by November of this year. Emergency management, though, really needs to focus on what is most imminent and right in front of them. And obviously, we are in summer. So cooling and smoke sheltering is top of mind and top priority, and that's where they're beginning the effort. That may be okay from a timing perspective, because on the warming shelter front in winter, I think we may need another month or two to go by before we would likely be able to get any kind of response to an RFP for contracted services. Some of our team has been reaching out and connecting with service providers who provide warming shelter services on contracts in counties near us and larger than us. And they've been very successful in doing so and built a very mature model over time. But they have found themselves at and beyond their own capacity. So taking on additional work would probably be challenging for them to contemplate at this point in time. And our local service providers are also struggling with capacity. So there's probably no one of them. And we did a survey of all them to be sure that no one of them would be willing to or have the ability to take on that kind of weather or smoke emergency sheltering plan for our homeless population. It really is going to be, take a community effort, I think, for that. And yet we still need all of that in our emergency management planning effort. So what I have asked for from this joint team, City, County Emergency Management, and Public Health Emergency Preparedness, in terms of some of the ways in which we have approached this in the past, I think prior to COVID and prior to such an increase in the volume of unsheltered people in our community, it was probably sufficient to open up air-conditioned public spaces during the heat of the day and welcome everyone in. Lots of communities all around the state have made that their cooling center plan for quite some time, and malls and malls, things like that, and it's been probably sufficient. We have more hot days now. We have more people needing to come into an air-conditioned space on those hot days. And they come from a variety of backgrounds, everyone from someone who has a home but no air conditioning or has a particular underlying condition, to folks who do not have a home and also may have underlying conditions and may also have behavioral challenges at the same time. So a one-size-fits-all approach probably is not going to be sufficient going forward. And COVID, of course, was really rocked all of our previous plans in terms of some public spaces being closed for a while, or even if they were open due to, you know, the need to keep people spaced apart and keep good ventilation and keep people protected, not as many people could take advantage of those spaces even when they opened. And as we, as we know, at this point, even though opening the library or opening another public building is a wonderful service, and the people that work there are incredibly welcoming and wonderful to everyone who comes in, it's probably not sufficient for some people who maybe cannot get there or don't want to leave all of their belongings behind and risk losing them in order to come across town or some, to another location in order to cool down and protect their health for a few hours. So we need more robust planning that is specific to our unsheltered population. We know that all of this requires resource, and it doesn't mean that any one entity is responsible for it all. Before we worry about who's going to do what, we just need to figure out what is needed and be sure that our plan accommodates that so that all of the members of our community are a part of this emergency planning effort, and so that we're able to serve people who need service during those times in safe and effective and respectful ways. So I hope that our team can make some fast progress on this. And, and I know that our, our service providers are willing to assist to the degree that they're able to do so, whether that is with funding or whether that is with volunteers or whether that is with distribution of supplies or maybe creating a little additional space when they can. But it is going to take a community effort, I think, when those kinds of events occur. And so the emergency plans spelling out a variety of different roles that can be played all over the community is going to be incredibly valuable to us. Finally, I would mention that the Oregon Department of Human Services has informed our group that they would like to offer Oregon DHS staff who are located here in our community, as those who want to volunteer when an event does occur, will be part of that volunteer force for the community. They've negotiated through their labor contracts with their unions to allow that to occur. And the, the impetus for that is that Oregon DHS as a whole wants to have good preparation and well-trained staff should a large statewide event occur. And to get some of that experience, they want to offer their services should we need them during one of those particular weather shelter or smoke shelter events. That is wonderful. I'm so glad that the offer is being made. We don't want to count on that as our only solution now, because keeping in mind, this is very new. We don't know how many people will volunteer. And depending upon the size and scope of any event, there just may not be enough. But we're thrilled to be able to count those among our potential resources should something occur. And to have those folks coming from that human services expertise and background will be incredibly helpful. And then finally, since we do not yet have a formalized plans in place, and we are in summer and we are expecting probably more, more heat than we've had to date so far this season, we will continue to do everything that we can do from a public health perspective in terms of connecting with our service providers, distributing supplies when we can, if we have the ability to put up an extra awning or tent at the daytime drop-in center, for example, or put up misters or fans, or help with water distribution, ice, things like that. We'll continue to do all that we can with the capacity we have, with, with the supplies we have available. And Community Services Consortium has also indicated that they may be able to help with the supply part of that if we run out of funding or, or supplies during this season. So that's my update there for now, and hope to be able to bring back more on that very soon to you. Back to you, Julie.
Thanks, Suzanne. I'm going to be providing a brief update on Project Turnkey 2.0. For folks who don't know what Project Turnkey is, it's a state program to provide funding for local areas to acquire motels or hotels and use them for emergency sheltering and convert them to units of permanent supported housing. And our community has applied for it previously and was awarded under Project Turnkey 1.0 with Corvallis Housing First in collaboration with Unity Shelter, running it as a shelter right now. We are now applying for Project Turnkey 2.0 to try to acquire an additional location. And Corvallis Housing First is again the lead agency applying for this, but there are lots of other key partners. And the key partners have been coming in and collaborating really because of the target population that was determined and looking at who's experiencing homelessness and complex situations and the population that really has nowhere to go. As a community in collaboration with providers, we decided to focus on people who are age 55 or older and people with disabilities, and disability could be physical or behavioral health, which could be substance use or mental health. And so that will be the target population. The intended use for whatever location we end up with would be to have some medical respite beds supported by Samaritan, and that would be for people who are being discharged from the hospital and who are experiencing homelessness, and they need a place to heal after whatever they had done at the hospital, whether it's a hip, hip replacement or whether they just gave birth and they're being discharged into homelessness. The other use for this site, depending on what site we end up with, would be to start with some emergency sheltering for that age 55 and older with disabilities population, and then convert those emergency units to permanent supported housing over time with renovations. So based on that target population and the intended use, we have some fantastic key community partners who are working with Corvallis Housing First to make this possible. Community Services Consortium, the Cascades West Council of Governments that supports folks who are older and living with disabilities. IHN, Inter-Community Health Network Coordinated Care Organization, wanting to support operational costs with possible different funding streams. Samaritan, of course, with the medical respite beds. Community Outreach Inc., COI, because they support veterans in different places in our community. And Lynn Benton Housing Authority has also expressed interest in trying to support this project in whatever way possible. And a key role that the county added dedicated staff are playing is really with our grant writer, Libby. She's been a key support person to reach out to different community partners and collect letters of support to pull together different components from past grant applications and from our local service providers to help write the narrative to support Andrea Myrie and Corvallis Housing First in putting together this application. And then also my role has been to convene partners and facilitate the conversation to help coordinate. I mean, you, you heard the list of different community partners. There's quite a few of them. And so the county's role is also in our letter of support to consider possible funding streams to help support this project. And then also as we convene to figure out where the gaps are and to figure out how we might be able to fill those gaps with our community partners. Did I leave anything else, Suzanne? I think that I covered most of it.
Yeah, I think you did.
Okay. And thanks so much to Libby for all the work that you are doing to try to make Project Turnkey 2.0 successful. The next update that I'm going to introduce and then pass over to Rebecca is the House Bill 4123 pilot to help provide local communities, counties, and partnerships with cities some funding to better coordinate our response to homelessness. And there's also been a press release issued on this topic. It came out on Friday. So if you haven't seen the press release on that, we'd be happy to share the information with you. The background on this is last fall Commissioner Ogierow worked with Association of Counties and League of Cities to really get us included in this pilot in a very, very short turnaround and tight timeline that was over the holidays. So it was quick decision-making, but the intention from this legislation is really to help fund local efforts. And we already were working on existing efforts, and we're hoping that this financial support from the state could help formalize those efforts and improve our collaboration and coordination and communications on this topic. So I'm going to hand it over to Rebecca to talk about our upcoming deadlines.
Thank you, Julie. And it's been a privilege to hop on this project and see actually how much work our community has done. We recently attended a meeting with AOC and LLC where they convened the different communities, and it was really exciting to see the work that is starting in other communities that is very much matching what we've set as a foundation here in Benton County. So one of the things we've been utilizing, some of the teams that we established specifically in response to our elected officials asking staff to prioritize Policy Number Six of the HOPE Recommendations, which was the sheltering system. So we've utilized that structure that was formed during that time to really work on this House Bill and the requirements. So the first step was to identify the requirements in the House Bill and what we have already satisfied and what we need to accomplish. So specifically a memorandum of understanding, even though we do have this collaboration already happening, the memorandum of understanding will serve as a formalization of that commitment to work together with the city of Corvallis to work through the requirements, the additional requirements of the House Bill. So that is due October 1st of this year. We've had several meetings the last couple of weeks where we've really vetted out what we need to do to address that. So moving forward from there, that team will then work to work on the preliminary requirements that have been the MOU, and then from there, the actual formation of the formal office, which we will come back to elected officials with various recommendations or ideas as we work with our service providers and the staff team that we have. I'm in addition to that, the requirement is a strategic plan, which is due next year, July 2023, which really will put a framework to the different prioritizations of projects that we're working on. So that will also be a collaborative process where we'll be working closely with our service providers and really understanding the different needs in our community and how we can best prioritize them. And then from there, we hope to have a good update come the joint electives meeting that's coming up as our team works together to get more details and more formalization of more information for you. So that's what I have. Thank you.
Great. And next up, just a quick update on something I think you're all familiar with is of what will be the creation of a Benton County Behavioral Health Crisis Center. As you know, this is part of the Justice System Improvement Plan and is a treatment-centered alternative to incarceration. It is also available to the rest of our community that may not be engaged with law enforcement or the court system, and it provides a treatment-centered alternative to emergency rooms and to hospitalization, which is much more expensive and not always the level of care that is required and not always trauma-informed. So the Crisis Center, as you know, that groundbreaking is going to occur very soon, and it's in the downtown area and the site where the DNM Auto Place has been residing. Ricky Garcia is our project manager for the service development side of this equation, as well as being very engaged in all of the work that's happening now around construction and design with Paul Wallsinger, who's the project manager on the construction piece of this project. We're very excited about adding to the effort to fill this gap in our community. We know that it's very difficult to get folks into Oregon State Hospital in the aid and assist program, and they come back to our community when they are ready to be able to aid and assist in their own defense. If we can keep those folks locally in the community, that's going to be not only less expensive, but a much preferred alternative for stabilization. We can do that. And then, of course, it will be available for law enforcement to refer folks to, community members may walk in and be assessed for crisis services at that location. Our service providers may bring referrals and utilize that center. Of course, our behavioral health team in Benton County provides crisis services now to both adults and to youth. There's, there's no age limitation on who can walk into our clinic and be assessed for crisis services and, and referred to the right level of care. But having a crisis center is going to make a significant difference in our ability to do this well. And with a small number of what we call chairs, because they are to be occupied 23, no, no more than 23 hours. So that's pretty short-term stabilization need. And a small number of what we call beds, because they can be, a person can be in, in that level of care for up to 29 days, less than a month. That, that provides a much-needed alternative in our community. We're hopeful that there could be potential opportunities for expanding what, what the first original version is planned for of the Crisis Center, because of course we can always use more, more appropriate space and more necessary services. So if those opportunities come along, it will also expand our ability to fill that community need. And I think you, probably all of you know from the regular updates you receive on the Justice System Improvement Program that the target for opening the doors of the Crisis Center is, is December of 2023. So we look forward to that. Julie, back to you.
Okay, thanks, Suzanne. I'm, I'm going to provide an update about ongoing HOPE implementation work. We'd call that homelessness and services system improvement, really on two topics that are integral to being able to implement a better sheltering system or an expanded sheltering system, which is HOPE Recommendation Number Six. So the first topic is care coordination. That's one of the HOPE recommendations. And the second topic is data improvement. That's another HOPE recommendation. So for care coordination, my role has been to convene folks to talk about what model of care coordination is going to work for our community and really wanting to collaborate and have some collective impact with other folks who are doing care coordination. So IHN is interested in implementing the FUSE model, the Frequent User Systems Engagement Model of Care Coordination, to pull different providers and partners together to try to address an individual's needs, one person at a time. There's also the situation table model of care coordination across different systems and entities for people at acutely elevated risk levels. And so I've been convening and meeting with IHN and Samaritan and our community partners and frontline service providers to figure out what's going to work best for our community and how we would implement it and how it would look from all these different perspectives for people who are out helping individuals in need. How would they engage with this kind of care coordination? So that's one thing we are actively working on and is ongoing. The next one is the data improvement, and under data improvement falls the topic of coordinated entry. How do we have a more coordinated assessment and data collection on people in need? And also, how do we coordinate an individual's entry into new available beds into the system of housing and services? And that is a complex topic that's going to take time to figure out how we can do that in a way that meets the needs of clients, helps our service providers who are out there doing the assessments, and also building the units to have people be able to transition to and enter into. We have lots of community partners who are working on this data improvement with us, our service providers, CSC, IHN, and Samaritan. And so the Data Improvement Work Group that I have been hosting is going to pivot to work on the topic of coordinated entry implementation. What they have been working What they have been working on for the past couple of months, um, is the possibility for a data analysis collaboration with OSU's Policy Analysis Laboratory. The acronym is Opal. Um, and IHN has also created a research institute, the IHRI, Inner Community Health Network Research Institute. And IHRI wants to collaborate with OSU to look at the data from our homelessness data management system and also the data from healthcare from IHN and Samaritan. Um, and have OSU really for the first time, look at that data together so that we can understand healthcare utilization and complex health needs of people experiencing homelessness. Really with the end goal being that we would have some realistic estimates of how many folks have what kind of high level of need and how much we're spending, um, as a community from our healthcare providers to meet those people's needs when they are experiencing homelessness. So I'm excited to see how that plays out and IHRI is looking at possible funding mechanisms to help support that data analysis. All right, moving on to the next topic is the upcoming Hope Meetings. Um, the Hope Executive Committee decides on the educational components at each Hope Advisory Board Meeting. And based on all the work that we're doing to implement the Hope Recommendations and the questions we keep getting asked from our community members. They decided on some specific upcoming topics. So at this Hope Board Meeting in July, happening next Wednesday. The educational component will be about Inner Community Health Network Coordinated Care Organization, IHN CCO, Samaritan Health Plans and the IHN Research Institute. What do they do? What is their role? How do they interact with the topic of homelessness and housing and the social determinants of health? So we'll have three different guest speakers, uh, from IHN, Melissa Isavoran, Charissa White and Paulina Kaiser, talking about their role and answering questions. In August, at the August Hope Meeting, uh, we will have Sean Collins from Unity Shelter and Andrea Myrie from Corvallis Housing First, who's on the Hope Board. Talking about Project Turnkey 1.0. How has it gone? What is happening at Third Street Commons? Um, and hopefully they might be able to talk about Project Turnkey 2.0, depending on the results of that application. And they'll be talking about the concept of housing first. What does housing first mean in practice? How is it playing out at these different locations in our community? And we've also had interest from current board members who have experienced homelessness and the difficulty in finding a place to live in Benton County, um, wanting to talk about their experience. So that will be at the August Hope Meeting. And then in September, um, my colleagues from our county community health centers are going to be attending to talk about what our community health centers or CHCs do. How do they support or interact with folks experiencing homelessness or housing insecurity? Cause our CHCs are also federally qualified health centers, FQHCs, and they serve anyone, um, regardless of documentation or health insurance status. So I think in the upcoming three meetings, uh, folks will get a lot of information and education about the different kinds of healthcare available and how it intersects with the topic of housing and homelessness, um, and also what housing first means, um, and how difficult it is to find a place to live in Benton County. Okay Suzanne, I'll pass it back to you.
Great. And before I take the last item for update, I just want to acknowledge and recognize Julie for how the amazing work that she has done over quite a period of time with the Hope Advisory Board. It was an amazing experience to watch, uh, her work over the course of many months in interrupted and in the midst of all of the, the COVID response to assist the board and shepherding forth the policy recommendations that you all ultimately accepted. And since that time, aside from Julie jumping in with any implementation work that, that we need from her. As well as helping to download information from her brain into Libby's and Rebecca and Kaylee's brains so that we can have more of a team effort on this. Julie's also done an amazing job, I think, in what I would categorize as board development. So bringing deep dives into these various topics to the Hope Advisory Board. These folks obviously already come with a great deal of knowledge on, on many fronts. But getting into the details of what it means to implement coordinated entry in order to have a database sheltering system that, that helps you serve people better and that helps you get more funding when you need it. I mean, that alone has been quite an educational topic. I know for me and probably was for many Hope Advisory Board members as well, and it's going to serve us well in the future. So, um, thank you Julie for the incredible work you continue to do in helping the Hope Advisory Board to, um, to be as effective and as informed and as valued as we need them to be on this important topic in our community. I, I think it sort of sets a standard, uh, and an example to be emulated by, I think, all of our advisory board supports. So thank you for that.
Thank you Suzanne. I really have to thank our service providers too, who teach me on a daily and weekly and monthly basis, um, about the incredible work they do that informs all of these efforts.
Thank you. And that was a perfect segue because, uh, the last topic to let you know is that we do plan, I, I think it's already on the calendar to have a joint elective meeting, City of Corvallis, uh, City Council and Benton County Board of Commissioners on Thursday, September 8th from four to 6:00 PM. The county is hosting, so it will be at the Calipuya Building. Uh, and, um, we want to be sure to invite and, and make all of our service providers aware of this meeting because we welcome them to attend and most importantly, to be speaking for themselves. We meet with and talk to, and as Julie said, are educated by, um, and we collaborate with our service providers frequently, um, weekly, if not more often than that. But we don't want to be their voice. They, um, bring a unique perspective. They are on the ground every single day. Um, and, uh, we really want them to be a part of that joint meeting and, and bring their voice to the conversation directly. We will probably make part of that meeting, uh, a substantial part of that meeting, uh, next steps and more updates around a House Bill 4123. The pilot for the Joint Homeless Response Effort that Rebecca talked with you about. If we have any decision points or areas where we need guidance from the elected bodies, we'll queue those up for you ahead of time. And, and attempt to cover them at that meeting. Uh, if we don't have those things, then we'll definitely bring you a robust update at the very least. We'll bring you any other updates that, uh, we think are timely and applicable, uh, on, on September 8th. And then we'll really focus on, um, a deeper understanding of Hope Priority Number Six, the sheltering system, which you all prioritized as first. And bring some clarity, um, that we are continuing to, that is continuing to emerge for us as we understand the complex components that are required to expand sheltering capacity as part of a functional system. So you heard Julie allude to some other efforts that are going on that are also other Hope Policy Recommendations. And it's not that we've singularly decided to go grab three more priorities and just, um, implement them fully. It's that without at least, um, starting to implement some of these things in part, we can't really responsibly create the sheltering system. They are all interconnected. Uh, and, um, and have brought, although we have a ways to go, um, they're already bringing more partners to this conversation, more engagement to this conversation and ultimately is going to bring more quality to the effort that we establish. Uh, and so we will, um, one of the areas we're focused on and that Rebecca is taking the lead on is really bringing you more of a digestible framework that is easy to understand whether you are a community member or a service provider or an elected official. In terms of what all the various components of a sheltering system for our community may look like from our perspective and in terms of gathering feedback from our service providers as well. Um, and then of course, giving you the opportunity to dive deep into any of those components that you would like to have more understanding or input about. And that's our plan for the joint meeting on September 8th at this time. And that's our update and we'll be happy to take questions.
All right. Thank you. I just wanted to apologize real quick in case anyone heard, uh, all that banging sounds. Uh, as many of you know, the Calipuya Building, uh, still continues to have construction. So my apologies. And with that, uh, questions or comments?
Yeah, uh, this is, well, I guess it's for the whole, whole group, but, uh, start off with Julie and remembering a couple of years back and, and you were kind of a one person band and, and, uh, identifying problems, what needed to be done. And, uh, I think your to-do list kept growing and, uh, I appreciate you, uh, persevering through, uh, some very challenging times and and it looks like you have more of a band now and, uh, more, more capacity. And, uh, congratulations on, uh, getting recognized by the state, uh, for, for the efforts and, and that's just really encouraging. Uh, it shows the value of patience that, uh, well, maybe things aren't, uh, where they should be right now, but we're hopefully headed in the right direction. And I, I think that's, uh, being, um, proven out on a, a daily basis. So congratulations on that. And my other comment I think is to Kaylee and, and Communications and the probably the whole county has had challenges in that, uh, arena and, uh, we're, we're making progress, but it, it's just critical. Different departments, different projects, doing good work. But we need to, uh, let the community know so that we have have their support and, and appreciation of the, uh, efforts that we are that we do have going at this point. So I'm glad to see that, uh, component of this great effort. So.
Thank you. Other comments or questions?
No questions at this time. I just want to acknowledge that, uh, that Turnkey 2.0 deadline is what? Less than a week away. So.
It's this Friday, Commissioner Ojuro. We had about three and a half weeks to pull everybody together. So I really applaud our service providers for working so quickly.
Yeah. So, uh, thank you very much for putting that together and, uh, hoping to increase the capacity, uh, for housing our unsheltered population by another quantum leap. That would be just wonderful. So thank you for all the work you're doing. Um, I miss the Hope Advisory Board role, um, but, uh, it's great to hear how much is going on, how much progress is being made and really welcome the new team.
Yes, and I will add my, um, thanks to you as well and my excitement for all of the great work that's being done. I, it, it's really awesome to hear about the DHS employees, you know, I mean, we'll, uh, I'll temper my excitement since we don't know what that looks like yet, but it's a good step in the right direction. Um, and I also wanted to say thank you for the two pager. That is super helpful because we get asked all the time, you know, what are you guys actually doing? Are you just sitting around and talking more? So this is great. Um, thank you. And then also, yes, I will keep all of my fingers and toes crossed for you for the Project Turnkey 2.0. That's that's me crossing my fingers if you can't see it on the camera. All right. Uh, any other comments or questions, uh, before we move on? Being done. Thank you very much. We really appreciate your time and have a wonderful afternoon.
Thank you, Commissioners.
And with that, we are going to take a five minute break. So we will come back at 10:26. All right, I think we are all back. And we can resume the meeting. So we will move into our business meeting. First up is the consent calendar. I just had one change. So let's see, the minutes of the May 3rd, 2022 board meeting. There was one little typo I found. It's on page 43 of our packet. But it says Williams observed that the state is doing a great deal of rulemaking, the Department of Land Conservation and Development Commission, DLCF, which is just a typo, needs to be DLCB. So with that change, do I hear a motion or any other changes that need to be made? Wait.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second. With the change, correct?
Correct.
Perfect. All those in favor say aye. 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 Motion carries. Next up, we have proclamations that we have in the matter of proclaiming July 26, 2022, as American with Disabilities Act Awareness Day. And we have with us Johan, our Equity Diversity and Inclusion Coordinator. Welcome, Johan.
Good morning, Commissioners and community members. I'm excited to read out this proclamation for you all. Need to fix my screen a little bit. One second. Okay, so on July 26, 1990, President George H. W. Bush signed into law the Americans with Disabilities Act, otherwise known as the ADA, which affirms our nation's commitment to eliminating discrimination against people with disabilities and standing. Let the shameful walls of exclusion finally come tumbling down. The ADA was the world's first comprehensive declaration of equality for persons with disabilities and covers approximately one in five Americans. Most people will experience disability at some point in their lives. Disability also impacts all intersectional identities. Ableism and stigma for their harms marginalized in historically excluded communities, including people of color, LGBTQ plus people, veterans, immigrants, people in recovery, and houseless individuals. Our work for access and inclusion must include all community members with disabilities. Disabled people and their family and loved ones that have been the advocates for equality have contributed significantly to our nation's advancement and protection. Some leaders include Temple Grandin, now DeMarco, Judith Human, Helen Keller, and Leroy F. Moore Jr. We cannot forget our local leaders and advocates for disability rights help ensure our community improves services and access for all. Among many other organizations in Benton County, the Benton County Special Transportation Program, Benton Area Transit, and the Benton County Developmental Diversity Program, along with their advisory committees, together serve over 1,000 Benton County residents of visual, auditory, physical, mental, emotional, cognitive, and developmental disabilities by assisting them with residence, work, school, medical treatment, therapy, shopping, and social activities. While we celebrate the 32nd anniversary of the American Disabilities Act and what has been achieved, we also recognize the full promise of the ADA can only be achieved if we remain committed to continuing our efforts to achieve full implementation of the goals of the ADA. We commit to increasing community collaboration, seeking feedback, training staff, and implementing procedures and practices that meet and exceed ADA expectations to ensure everyone with disabilities in Benton County can live, work, learn, and thrive. Now, therefore, the Board of Commissioners here proclaims July 26, 2022, as American Disabilities Act Awareness Day in Benton County, celebrating the 32nd anniversary of the ADA and reaffirming Benton County's commitment to continue to work to bring forth the promise of equity envisioned by the ADA. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
I've moved to approve proclamation number P 2022-013, proclaiming America's with Disabilities Act Awareness Day.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Johan.
Thank you. And I also want to mention that we will have a staff training on that day for those to learn 32 facts about disability and how to support people with disabilities in our community. So that will be available and email should be sent out. Reminder email will come out later this week.
Wonderful. Thank you for sharing that. All right. With that, we can move along to old business discussion of the Oregon Consensus slash ICM Resolution Solid Waste Situational Assessment Report with Sam Imparati. Please correct me if I mispronounce that. And while you gentlemen are getting situated, I'm going to run to my office for 45 seconds to get my notes, which I forgot. I'll be right back. All right. Welcome.
Are you?
I am ready. Please continue.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairwise Commissioners. I thought it might be helpful if we start with a quick recap of how we got to today and why Mr. Imparati is here. So if it's, if you'll indulge us, I'll provide a little bit of background and turn this over to Sam to finish the bulk of the presentation. So, good morning. I'm Darren Nichols, the Community Development Director for Benton County, and you may recall when we embarked on this consensus building exercise, we talked a little bit about the events that led up to today. And so going back 13 months ago in June of last year, Republic Services submitted an application for a conditional use permit to our office at the Community Development. That application was heard by the Solid Waste Advisory Council in October 2021. That Solid Waste Advisory Council recommended approving the application on a six-to-one vote. Then in December, after a couple of public hearings and lots of testimony, the Planning Commission voted on a six-to-zero vote to deny the conditional use permit application. Shortly after that, Republic Services filed an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision, which would have brought that decision into the board, but asked for a 30-day, sorry, a 90-day stay in order to give them time to reflect on the Planning Commission's decision. During that period of time, we had some initial visits with parties about what might be next steps forward. And on March 11th, Republic Services chose to withdraw their appeal, which then opened an opportunity for us to have an open dialogue with you all and also with the community. I recommended at that time that we embark on a consensus-based process using a third-party facilitator to help us understand a few things. And we talked about some key objectives. Number one being to listen to the community and incorporate that feedback into whatever we do going forward. At the same time, to reengage our community in an exploration of constructive dialogue about how we handle solid waste and disposal, including the future of Cough and Butte landfill. We also talked about the importance of building a common information base as a community. And that included accepted facts and information just as facts, but also a clear understanding of our roles and the mechanisms surrounding solid waste and solid waste management. So at that point, you all agree that would be a worthwhile effort and ask us to proceed exploring who might be able to help us have this conversation. So our team reached out to Oregon Consensus and we began to explore ways to approach the size and scale of this, this type of a conversation. We also explored who might, what experienced facilitators and facilitation teams were out there that could help us have this kind of conversation successfully. And we chose to go with Sam Imparati and his team at the Institute for Conflict Management, which is an affiliated practitioner working with Oregon Consensus. So Benton County signed a contract with Oregon Consensus and Oregon Consensus has asked Mr. Imparati and his team to help us have the first part of this facilitated dialogue, which is a situational assessment. So I'm going to stop there. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I would encourage us to hear from Mr. Imparati and the results of his assessment.
Any preliminary questions? Being done.
Chair Commissioners, good morning. Sam Imparati, Executive Director of ICM Resolutions. It's been my privilege to engage in a situational assessment of the solid waste management issues in and around Benton County. A couple of quick, quick points to underscore the process. I gave everyone I interviewed an opportunity to review a draft report. And some meaningful changes have been made to the report since the draft. I'm sure not as many changes were made as were requested. I did, however, do my best to look at the feedback and take it seriously. And I did, in fact, fine-tune some of the recommendations moving forward. That exercise, I believe, went a long way in helping me understand what the people were actually saying and what folks were actually saying and wanting me to tell you today. And that was very much appreciated, especially the correction of the typos for which I remain embarrassed. But those were, in fact, corrected as my sixth-grade teacher, Sister Mary Fitton, used to say, "There's no such thing as good writing, just good rewriting." So with that in mind, the report was improved both stylistically and substantively. In a nutshell, what I'm proposing to your consideration today is what I'm calling a bridge process. We all, you all know well what happened over the course of the last year. As a result of that, we have what I described as the classic wicked problem. The future state is we know that there will be an eventual additional supplemental new CUP process from Republic. We know that you're going to work on materials management, waste management, a tight plan. We know that the hauling agreement is going to be coming up for renewal once Philamis and Corvallis do their work over the coming year. So this bridge between where we were and where we're going to go, knowing those processes are before us, is what I'm proposing. So a major clarification between the draft and the final report is to try to make pristine in its clarity the fact that if you approve this process as written, and of course, there's no obligation for you to do that, but it is not designed to opine on the merits of any new CUP, on any solid waste management, materials management plan, or hauling agreement. It is simply to, if you will, create a reset opportunity for the community dialogue. To do that successfully, I believe it must be based on common understandings, as I'm talking about here. And, you know, if you will, if, if there was only one recommendation that you would consider approving, it would be on page six of your hymnals, also known as my report, developing common understandings. And it lays out the history of Cough and Butte, the summary of the county's current rights and obligations to Republic, vice versa, and the summary of rights and obligations to the other related entities. That is the beginning of this reset, is to set in place the answers to those three major topics. I've only given simple examples, so some of the issues can, that could go into that. I'm suggesting that staff develop, develop that and with input from the work group, should you decide to approve that, that gets fleshed out. And then that becomes, if you will, the true north for the substantive discussions on process. Not substantive discussions, again, on the merits of these applications. But what does that process need to look like going forward? So as I mentioned, the five elements of a successful team, this is really about getting a common understanding, a system of accountability, and establish goals and objectives for purposes of moving forward. So in a nutshell, that is the overview. Otherwise, I would just be repeating that, which is in the report, which I'm sure you have read. I am happy to respond to the three public comments if that would be helpful. And I'm also happy to defer the rest of this agenda item to you for comment Q and A.
Sure. If, I would love to hear your response to the public comment.
So with regard, one commentator indicated, I believe, and sorry that my hearing isn't great and the audio in that moment wasn't pure, but the gentleman from Republic talked about, about not mixing these processes and only wanting to do the CUP. And it wasn't clear to me if that was a result of me not being clear enough to say, "We're not doing this on the merit. We are just doing the process." Or was it a concern in the timing of the work group's efforts? In other words, a concern that the CUP be done first and if, if the other things not be done or vice versa, that that could affect the timing vis-à-vis an application. And I purposely left the triaging of those issues to the group with the advice and consent of staff to determine in what order and what amount of agenda priority they believe is the best fit for those particular fusses. So that's point one. It is true that I was asked to ask Republic to withhold filing of their next CUP until after this work is done. I think there's two nuances there that are important. First, it's not just the work of the work group that would need to be done. They are going to make a recommendation first to SWAC and DSEC slash the Planning Commission, then back to you. And then you would need to act on the work that's coming out of this work group. So any such requests, be they, assuming they're appropriate, maybe they're not, I would have to, not just the end of the process that Oregon Consensus through me is proposing. Secondly, it's not my place as the outside consultant to make a request. I am not anyone's attorney here. I am simply trying to facilitate a collaborative conversation. And even if it was my task or within my scope, I would never do that before we would have this meeting to assess where you are, because it's just really your decision and how you want to convey that. So respectfully, that was the reason in the last week, I wasn't able and positioned to do that. And let's see. Community engagement, that's an essential part of this process. So the work group is designed to have a broad cross-section of members of the community and also and also to be publicized, to have this on the websites, to have the those common understandings put together in a usable document that that's been promoted and an educational campaign goes forward to educate the public and let them have their opportunities to be heard. And in fact, any work group meeting would be open to the public with the opportunities to be heard. So with that said, that concludes my preliminary comments. And I'm here to answer any questions or open any way I can.
Sure. Thank you. I do have one, well, I have a quick question. Under your observations on page four. Number one, you said the essential elements of a healthy civic relationship include. And I just wondered if you could speak to your definition of a healthy civic relationship, because I can think of that in many different ways.
I'm sorry, you're right. What number?
Page number four, observations. Number one, the essential elements of a healthy civic relationship.
So supportive values, mutual goals, effective accountability, mechanism, trust and respect. So a healthy civic relationship, from my definition, so it's the foundation of two, is that people of good faith come together and explore issues with an open mind. They do not come to the table with a foregone conclusion that way A is the way truth and light and way B is the devil incarnate in action. If they come with an open mind, are fact based in their approach and explore it from not not just their personal interests or their representative interests, but for what is in the best interest of the residents and the community in Benton County. That is the the true north that runs, forms the basis for my suggestions. And you'll see a frequently references to, I made my decision based on what I believe from a process perspective was in the best interest of the community at large, not just the interest groups that I interviewed, which are welcome to the table, invited to the table, and can really help a process uncover unintended consequences.
Perfect. Thank you. The little like graphic that's there to the right, what what does that represent?
That represents just me in the middle, trying to bring together all these various points of view and put them forward in a in a report to and to focus on the alternative interpretation of supportive values and mutual goals.
Great. Thank you. I really like, I really like that. It applies to a broad range of situations, I think. Other questions before I have to work?
Questions or opinions? So I will defer. I do have a question based off, so it's on page 10. With the recommendation for, let's see, it probably starts on page nine. Membership of the work group. So you list what the preferred makeup of a work group would be. And I was just wondering if you could speak to that, why you chose those numbers?
The first is I purposely picked an even number for the reasons articulated. I don't think it would be productive to have, in other words, a mini quasi judicial hearing, which is exactly what we're trying to avoid at this stage. We're trying to set common understandings. And so I picked an even number on purpose with that in mind. In interviewing the various folks, including talking to the various staff members, I want, I tried to come up with a formulation that has what I call internal and external credibility. What do I mean by that? When the assembled work group is sitting around the table and they're looking to their left and to their right and in front of them, and they can say, all of the deal makers and all the deal potential breakers are here at the table. We have those folks that can make or break a deal here. Then this committee is balanced and representative. External credibility is when frankly, the three of you in the broader public look at a recommendation from this work group and say, wow, if these folks could come together and get to yes on common understandings, that has a high degree of credibility to it. And we can have confidence that this wasn't a behind the scenes kind of smoke filled room stereotypical event. So I believe that there, I believe very intentionally that SWAC and DSEC should have members that they appoint. Because there, you've appointed them, they're integral part of this particular process and this particular subject, they should be there. The planning commission, because their SWAC, DSEC is going to have a role. At least as it relates to the CUP, same with the planning commission. I believe Republic should be here both locally and nationally. And there's a provision for zooming for that purpose, because sometimes local members of a national organization don't have full authority to speak and present. And so sometimes they need to get input from the national folks. And so having them available as a part of the team frankly increases efficiency and transparency moving forward. I believe that eight members of the public would be an ideal number. I also recognize that it is difficult to get people who can invest the time and energy and intellect and creativity into these processes. But there, I thought there should be, as in any of your groups, a representative cross section. If you have a committee or a work group in this case, where you already know the outcome before you present the information, by definition, it's not going to be balanced. So people should be able to look at that and say, wow, I mean, everyone's here. And and this is going to be fair and reasonable by definition. Because of the intersection of DEQ and the county's permitting and what's within their jurisdiction and what's within yours and which comes first. You know, your conditional use permit or the DEQ approvals, what have you. I thought it made sense for them to sit ex officio. They're not residents, but they play an integral role in this particular portion. Because of the the long term planning, it seemed that having two neighboring jurisdictions makes sense because we have the statistic, I believe, the most common number I hear is that 6% of the material that's going into life comes from Benton County, therefore 94% comes from elsewhere. Perhaps they should be there. Again, we're just planning the process to move forward, that that would be helpful. And then Benton County staff, obviously, they're because of their subject matter experience, expertise. They would also sit, but they are ex officio members because having the county report to the county, they have the opportunity to do that by a staff report at the end of the work group. But they're there as a resource to the rest of the folks.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Malone?
Yeah. Little bit of a follow up on that. I'm a big fan of developing facts and process you've described, sounds great. And I guess I'd like a little clarification, how that fits in with number eight on page five, kind of the other side of that story that some of the parties have pretty firm positions and may not be that amenable to an open dialogue. And I guess a little clarification, how those two things, I see those two things balancing out going forward.
So multi-layer response to that, Commissioner. First, I believe that your seasoned leadership as the commission is essential to a successful process. To the extent you believe it's in the best interest of the county to signal to this work group that you truly want them to explore this, not debate this, that you truly want to understand the facts with external credibility. This could mean bringing in third party resources to come in and opine. I think that's going to be key to this process. The second, whoever you might pick to facilitate this group, I believe, has to be a very strong mediator type facilitator who can manage this process with a little hug and a little nudge from time to time as they go through this process to get to yeses. And and so it takes some impasse breaking type skills going forward. The the other approach, a person with that skill set will have the ability to tease out what is commonly happens. In my experience, where you get Team A bringing in their expert who is saying the sky is falling. And then you have Team B coming in with their expert and saying, no, the earth is rising. And the mediator then needs to ask them each, what are your underlying assumptions that are the foundation for your conclusions? And one will say, and again, just making this up, for example, I use a 6% discount rate. Why use the 13% discount rate? Well, 13, if you used a 6%, what was your answer? Oh, well, I would agree with my colleague and and vice versa. So you start with the season question, you start to tease out really, why are there the differences here? And if you have a a sense of direction from you that you don't want, you want to know the balanced answer for this the wide community, not just for interest groups A, B, C, and D. But you're giving them almost a fiduciary obligation to come to you with the best information.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I like your proposal. I think that it is exactly what's needed in terms of getting to the information, building trust and relationship so that we can actually have an adult conversation about moving forward. It's a lot of work. And that, if I have one concern, it's that the potential mission to this working group might be a little too much work to do in the time available. And I concur with the community members that really would like to get agreement from Republic that we will have time to complete the process, because if we don't, we may succeed in building relationship and at least getting to some common agreement on facts. But we won't have everything we need in our toolkit to make the best possible decision for the community. I want to go back to Sean Edvin's comment about the landfill franchise versus the hauling franchise and never shall the twain shall meet, you know, that they're separate things. I, what I heard him doing was conflating the hauling franchise with the sustainable materials management plan, the long term, you know, solid waste management planning. I think that's wrong. I think that we do need to have the group think about scoping for that long term materials management plan, because that will inform the philosophy or the vision that we have moving forward for any landfill expansion. And in my perfect world, we would have finished that planning before any of this conditional use permit came, you know, coming to us. But it's not for growth. We're building bridge. So, but I do see that perhaps we don't need to include the tasks such as scoping out the next steps prior to looking at the reopener for the hauling franchise. That's probably something that work that staff can do with SWAC and DSEC. Clearly, it needs to be done. I also want to say that I really appreciate the focus on criteria for any decision making and clarifying what our current development code and solid waste code actually mean. And because there's a lot of vagueness there, there's a lot of opportunity for decision making based on whatever, however you interpret those words and those phrases. I think we need to have a common understanding for where those goalposts are going to be, because that will make for a much more equitable process for all members of the community, both Republic and community members who are strongly opposed to any expansion. Again, I wish we had done that work prior to any of this happening. But we need to do it before the conditional use permit comes back to us and in a transparent way that engages a broad swath of the community. Lastly, I want to say I I like the composition that you recommend for the working group. I've had people from adjoining counties who use our landfill approach me about wanting to have at least a seat at the table and be able to know what's coming and provide input. So I appreciate that ex officio role. So that's my two cents at this point.
Thank you. Just only one response on the the potential topic of the hauling agreement. This could easily be a one hour item where the staff tees it up and presents it to it. And here's what we're thinking. What do you see? I'm only suggesting that as an add on. So there'd be one place to have these conversations for this cooling off period of time. To move forward, otherwise, I'm concerned that there'll be
Yes.
these various paths that I think would potentially be problematic.
Too many tables. And you've got to have one table that everyone knows, where everyone knows what's going on. And I agree, I understand that. And I agree that it's important. Otherwise, there was always that fear, some sort of background.
So to clarify my understanding, so we were just talking about timelines for some of this work, timelines for a new CUP to be submitted by Republic. I mean, we, we can ask Republic not to submit it, but that's really up to them. And then I just want to make sure that we are not getting into any legal gray areas by, you know, trying to discourage them from applying, you know, I don't, I don't know if that needs to be a concern or not.
Yeah, this just jumped, I think that baseline reminder is the property owner always has the right to pursue whatever permissions or permits are available. You can always ask a property owner to hold off or to put aside a proposed effort until more facts are gathered to a process is complete. But ultimately, it would just be an ask, property owner always says that, right?
Sure. Okay. And then not seeing it in here now, but was there some recommendation here about if the CUP needs to come forward sooner than this other work can be done? Or is that, okay, so I see the county should contract out the planning and legal review of the anticipated Republic Services CUP application.
So the, yes, I mean, that, I suspect just because of the contracting requirements of any governmental entity like your own. Yeah, it would probably be wise for staff to start thinking about that procurement effort. And and so you do all the proper notices and timing and see who's out there and has the capacity. Both has to subject matter expertise and frankly, that availability. I'm not sure there's a lot to say. These folks are not like lawyers where we're everywhere. You know, there's a handful of them.
So would your recommendation be in a perfect world that we complete this work first before a new CUP is filed by Republic?
Again, please, would my recommendation be?
Would your recommendation be that if we were living in a perfect world, we would be able to do all of this work before Republic submits a new CUP?
Well, I think the CUP work is the key. The, I am not enough of a subject matter technical expertise to know the actual literal oversection between the Sustainable Materials Management Plan issues and the franchise agreements. But it seems like that, you know, if you're, if we're going to go through all this effort and create clarification, it seems like everyone want to know where the goalposts are before the game begins. But ultimately, as your counsel indicated, I think that's largely up to Republic.
Sure. I'm just kind of talking it out here, trying to settle my thoughts. Just, I guess that would depend on, you know, what Republic is thinking and what their goals are. I can see how, if we can engage in these, in a process such as this, it would take a fair amount of time. I feel like it always takes longer than you think. I feel like it always takes longer than you think. So that's something to think about. And I, by the way, I really liked your hugs and nudges comment. Every, we all need a hug and a nudge sometimes, right? So good stuff. Other comments, questions? I guess my other thought is I'm wondering what direction that staff needs because in my mind, I feel like we need, I mean, yes, in a perfect world, I would love to do all this. This is great. We should do it. In the reality, in the real world, you know, how feasible is it? What is the dollar amount? You know, what's the, I feel like we would need scoping and feasibility, so.
Sure.
Yes. I agree that we need that staff input and it would be very helpful. I think, you know, it is an ambitious plan. It's not an undoable plan, agreed. And we personally, I don't think that additional CUP process is going to be very successful without doing at least finding the common ground, agreeing on facts and agreeing on the goalposts. Sure. If we can't do that prior to a new conditional use permit, we're just going to end up in the same place where we were before.
Definitely.
And so that's, I just want to say that before we get into costs and time and process. And I do hear part of that comment about having one table has some implications for staff too, because it might also mean that DSAC and SWAC don't, it will change what they are doing while this process is going on also. So we don't have multiple tables. So what's the feasibility of that? How do we, how do we indicate that this is just a really high priority initiative? And so what part of what goes along with that is what outside expertise might we want? How available is it? And have we scoped any of the potential costs for, say, the kind of consultants that Deshutes and Marion Counties engaged?
And I'll just share too, I, you know, I, we did, we went through this process. We have a whole bunch of good stuff here. And the last thing I want to do is for us to just say, nope, we're not going to do it. I mean, that would just be an incredible waste of time. So having said that, Darren?
Yeah, thank you very much, commissioners. You're asking really good questions. And so the answer is, the direct answer is no, we have not begun to scope this out. In part because we want to see where you are. And I think it's really important that you follow Sam's recommendation that the board take an active leadership role. It's one of the elements that I also agree is key to our success going forward. Whether or not we have the staff capacity, I would say this is an important conversation. It's a critically important conversation. And one of the things that we talked about as we were considering whether to embark even on this first step was what hasn't, hasn't happened in the past. And we remarked that there's been a big interest in the community in solid waste and disposal about every 20 years, and we have flinched at the last minute and then kicked it 20 years down the road. And so my sense is we will never have a better opportunity or more capacity than we do right now. And so I would urge you to provide the leadership in the direction that we need to continue to make this priority. And we will find a way to get this work done and to engage this community in the conversation that it has wanted to have for 45 or 50 years. And I think the fact that we've invested in this partnership with Oregon Consensus and that we've asked for help is an indicator of your commitment and your willingness to at least explore what the possibilities are. One of the things that Sam mentioned in this report is that the people that he talked to were open and willing to visit, and that is not a small thing. Really applaud that parties that have participated in the conversation and who have indicated their willingness to continue to participate in the conversation because I think this is a conversation that the community and the different perspectives that that includes want to have this kind of robust dialogue. And the other thing, the last thing I would say is, we don't have to bite off the whole apple at once. We can continue to take a stepwise approach. If it appears that it's just not worth continuing, you, you know, we, you can make that decision at any time, but I think we owe it to ourselves and the community to have at least the next step and continues to explore this. This important part of our future.
Thank you. And so what I hear is a request, a request for the commissioners to provide active leadership. And I can commit to providing active leadership and other commissioners.
For sure. You know, and I, one thing I would say is that I want to hone in on the term you used, stepwise. That's one of the things I saw in this recommendation and that you wouldn't be having all the conversations at once, really would be stepping through the decisions. So if we only did get to a certain point, we wouldn't, we would have a certain body of work accomplished already at that point. So we front-loaded with the most important conversations about common understandings and about code and criteria and those goalposts so that we can at least achieve that much work.
Yeah, that's right. And so being mindful of the timeliness of this and the urgency to move quickly. We have invested the last several months in laying the foundation to have a much more efficient conversation. I would, I would say that our staff focus and, you know, even ICM's kind of understanding of the issue, it took a little time to get started, but we are now at a point where I feel like we, our understanding is substantially advanced. So we're really ready to have this conversation and to have it more efficiently. The community is engaged. They're interested. They know what the questions are and they know what needs to be explored, so.
So we've got some momentum.
Yeah, we've built a lot of capacity just in having the conversations that, well, I see we, the conversations that Sam has been having with constituents has built the capacity already. So we encourage us to tap that if we're ready.
I'm fully in support of this effort. And I appreciate the comments about the groundwork has been laid and because my concern has been mentioned, this could go on for a long time. In some respects, we don't have a long time. And so figure out what our priorities are as far as getting down the list. And absolutely moving forward with all deliberate speed. And appreciate the work that's been done at this point to clarify the questions. And absolutely, we need to proceed.
So would it be fair to say that our direction to staff is to explore next steps? And I would want to go further than that.
Okay. Personally, I would much rather say I approve of this process. I agree with the intent and how it's framed and full speed ahead.
You concur, Commissioner Malone?
Yes.
All right. As do I. And if, you know, any bumps along the road, feel free to let us know and update us on the progress, obviously. What else do you need from us? A motion?
Well, I'm reading a few sets of eyes here. I had a preliminary conversation with Joe Kirby before he left, and Joe was supportive and indicated that we can invest what it takes to get this work done now, not knowing what that means exactly. And recognizing that Joe isn't here and we've asked Tracy to fill some pretty good shoes. I feel like I should just double check with Tracy to see if you think to add at this point. Not to put you on the spot.
I don't have any notes from Joe on this topic.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And then just looking at Vance, I think a motion would be good in that it gives us the most firm, clear direction. And if you want to accept these recommendations, give us a deadline to bring something back to you in the spirit of keeping this conversation moving quickly and efficiently.
Sure. Do you have a recommendation for such a deadline?
I can help you out here, Darren.
Please.
So as you all have said, there's a lot in this report. I would offer as a suggestion from Darren coming back that you take a motion to accept the report and direct staff to come back next week with a timetable and a plan of attack on how to address the various proposals that have been put forward in the report. That way staff can kind of wrap its arms around the scope of the various elements, present how it plans to put them forward to you, and then make sure that you're all in agreement with both the timeframe and their, how they are picking the steps to go forward.
Perfect. Thank you.
That'd be a lot to bite off.
All right. Well, that was, excuse me, were you, okay, I was just going to say that was a lot of information. Does there a motion that a commissioner would like to make?
I would move that we accept the ICM resolutions report on this topic and that we direct staff to come back to us at our next Tuesday meeting with a plan to proceed in 2026 and implement this proposal.
Motion made in seconded. All those in favor say aye. Motion carries.
And I would also say that we, for anyone listening now or later, that if you're interested in participating in this process, please get in touch with Darren Nichols at Community Development because I expect that he will be the holder of the list. And that if we all have suggestions, should probably also direct them to Darren.
Perfect. Thank you.
And I would just like to say a round of thank yous. Thank you to our community for being patient and trusting us to go down this road. Thank you to Republic Services for, you know, pulling back and trying to do the right thing for the community. Thank you to our staff. Thank you to Sam. I really feel good about this. I think we can come up with some good stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Moving on to new business. We have the ratification of Benton County Deputy Sheriff's Association Teamsters 2022 to 2027 Collective Bargaining Agreement. And with us, Tracy Martin.
Thank you, Commissioner. The county's management bargaining team included myself, under Sheriff Don Rogers, Acting Patrol Captain Chris Duffett, Eric Wolke, who's the Assistant HR Director, and Todd Lyon was our Legal Counsel and spokesperson. We have Sheriff Ben Arshol in close contact with us, offering support and guidance throughout the process. The, we met with the BCDSA Teamsters team, who was represented by Teamsters Representative Michael Mann, Kim Lovick, the BCDSA President, was also serving on the team, as well as Doug Surratt, BCDSA Vice President Christopher Dale, who is their Secretary Treasurer, and Eric Kessling also served on their team. We met four times commencing in April, and we were able to reach agreement the week of, I believe it was June the 9th. BCDSA has ratified the contract and it is before you for approval and ratification. When I submitted the agenda checklist, I included a summary of the changes of the contract. I won't go over those on a line-by-line basis now, but happy to answer any questions. I would like to underscore and highlight, however, that we do have a five-year contract, which is the first time in my tenure with the county. Really happy to be able to bring that in front of you. And also to just convey that the dialogue, and I use that word intentionally, between the teams was very fruitful, very productive, and I think very interest-based. We were able to have very productive discussions as a result. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Very good. And I just want to say I appreciate that list that highlights all the changes that made it very easy to understand. Other questions or comments?
No particular questions or comments. It looks like a a good document, but an interesting reading, clarified processes. It looks like Sheriff is with us. He may have a comment, but.
I wanted to thank Tracy and I wanted to thank Kim Lovick and her team as well. I thought the two teams, I agree, Tracy worked really well together, and I'm just happy to see that five-year contract also.
Thank you. And I also would like to thank our staff for their work that went into this. And I would like to thank the union and the union reps for all of their good work representing our people. You know, the employees of Benton County are, that's the most important thing because without people, nothing gets done. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve the 2022 to 2027 collecting, collective bargaining agreement negotiated between BCDSA Teamsters and Benton County.
Second, motion made in seconded. All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. All right. And with that, we can move on. Is there anything else for the good of the order before we adjourn the meeting? Being and hearing none, I will adjourn the meeting at 11:23 a.m. Thank you, everyone.